Good evening and welcome to the September 8th meeting of the North Andover Select Board. We are back into our open session and I would like to ask you to stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to move on to public comment. Per the Select Board policy, public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between citizens and the Select Board. It is a citizen's opportunity to express his or her opinion on issues of town business. The Board may respond to a public comment by taking it under consideration when deliberating on an agenda item or referring the item to administration for appropriate action or response. Public comment shall be for a period of up to 15 minutes with speakers being allowed three minutes to present their material. Is anybody here for public comment?
Come on up.
I'm going to bring you the microphone. It's Melissa.
Yes.
All right, you ready?
Yes.
There you go.
Hello, this is Brian Capola. I am here. This is the street so far you've repaved it, but I'd like to know where the rest of it is. The sidewalk, part of the sidewalk being dug up in the crosswalk is because I'm wondering when that's going to be completed and because tonight tried to get the bus over here, I had a difficult time crossing the street. The view is being blocked. The cars don't see it and don't care to stop. Trying to hit the video one.
It's gone.
Is this the video?
Mm-hmm. The car just drove by.
Okay. I'm looking for the voice. Oh, that intuitive thing.
Okay.
Yeah, we got the pavement done, but I'd like to know so that then where is the beef, direct to the beef? I hope when you do these sidewalks before the winter comes. An accident waiting to happen. Here is the sidewalk on the fondest street side of Main and Sutton Street going towards Lawrence.
Okay.
Here is the sidewalk on the other side of the street where Ralph's Poppies going towards Market Basket. Yeah, we got the pavement done, but I'd like to know so that then where is the beef, direct to the beef?
Okay.
I hope when you do these sidewalks before the winter comes.
Thank you, Mr. Capola.
Well, if you know. As I said, is it going to be next summer for that now too? That's the question. Thank you very much.
Okay. I think they're still working, right? That's the...
Yeah, they're definitely still working. It looks to me from the photo like the part that's not done yet is actually where the ramp will go onto the street, but I'll check in with them tomorrow, Mr. Capola, and you can call me at the office if you want. Call Melissa, the Town Manager. Give me a call.
Your name?
Melissa. Yeah, you can call me tomorrow and we'll look, okay?
Perfect. Yeah, we know they're not quite finished, but they've been working hard to get it all done. Is there anyone else for public comment? Come on up. We know we've seen you before, but just tell us who you are and where you live.
I'm Leslie Frazier. I live at 24 Cobblestone Circle. I'm here on behalf of the Friends of Memorial Park. We have a new design from the VFW and we're very pleased with it. And I want you to know that we are totally behind this, this new design. We were not happy, we being myself and our small group, several of the neighbors, people in the garden club, I took an informal poll and I relayed those comments to Jeff Clark and to the VFW, and I think they really listened to what we asked. Instead of many pieces, the new design has a central, a very sophisticated, meaningful, and significant piece of granite that will be totally in keeping with the other monuments, the other three monuments. And it's also in keeping with the general feeling of the park, which is large stands of plantings. It's nothing fussy at all in that park. That's the whole Olmsted plan. And so we want to commend them for listening to what people had to say, the good and the bad, and they really responded to that. So we're very pleased with that. And so I also presented the new design to the Improvement Society the other night and they're for it too. We haven't seen the final drawings, but they really liked the new design. So we would like to endorse it and hope that you will approve this new design.
Thank you.
I have to tell you this, Leslie, that this past week I was upstate New York meeting my, one of my grandchildren, the two of them are there, so I was really happy about that. And we took the children to the zoo and it was an Olmsted Zoo in upstate New York, in Watertown, New York. So I just, I thought, wow.
Wow. I've never heard of that one.
It was, it's really lovely because it just, it just takes in all the natural trees and plantings and things like that. It really was, it was great, but it was fun. I'm like, oh, got one across the street.
Exactly.
No, it was very nice, so I just thought I would share that with you.
Nice. Thank you.
Thank you all. Is there any other public comments tonight? And if not, we're going to move on to new business and I will hand it over to Town Manager Rodriguez to review the fiscal year '25 year end budget.
Thank you. So this report was produced by our Finance Director. It basically runs through where we ended fiscal year '25. As you know, fiscal year '25 usually takes us until end of July to kind of close out, which is why we do this exercise in August. So we basically let you know that our revenues were $133 million for fiscal year '25, which was about a 4% increase from fiscal year '24. Our revenue sources have stayed pretty much in line with about 74% coming from property taxes, about 12% coming from state aid or our cherry sheet, which is the money that we receive for Chapter 70, as well as our unrestricted general aid. We still have local receipts come in at around 12%, which is actually a little higher than the year before, which is 11.9. We've been watching those closely since COVID because if you remember correctly, they actually decreased during that period. So it's good to see even that, just small amount of increases. You can see basically that we also have our special revenue accounts and we had basically in-line spending on all of those as well for expenditures. And that includes things like school lunch, our opera funding, CPC, and then any other educational special revenue accounts exist, things like athletics, et cetera. For our capital budget funding this year, we spent $13 million of our capital budget on school buildings, about 60%. Sewer enterprise was 1.3, roadways were 8.79. As you know, in fiscal year '26, that would be a higher amount because we put more in this year as one of your goals. Municipal buildings were almost 600,000, about 2.66% of our capital spending. The other $6 million number that's left are things like McAvoy Field, smaller projects that are not in buildings and things like that. Our enterprise funds were still in line with what we usually would expect. The retained earnings decreased in water because we spent them on capital projects, which is to be expected. Our revenues were up this year, which is great, by $737,000. And for sewer fund, routine earnings also increased. They increased from $6 million to $7.3 million. We didn't spend as much money in that one, although I do anticipate we will probably be going more into that over the next couple of years. And so a pretty standard year, but you know, everything is in line with where we would expect it to be.
Okay. Any questions?
In the back, 45 pages is basically every report you could ever want to see.
Nice summary at the beginning is great.
When do you think we'll see, or when do we anticipate seeing the report on the water and sewer rates?
So you mean the full analysis?
Yeah.
We're just starting those now. I would say they'll probably take a good solid six months. They're going to want to do a lot of research into what future capital needs we have until we know we have things like the meter project coming up soon, that kind of stuff. So I would say it probably would take a good six months.
I think it's sort of nice that it seems like it was a...
Yeah, smoother.
Smoother-ish.
Does grant funding end up in here anywhere accounted for? Or no? It's all separate?
No, grant funding would be separate.
Okay. Do we keep track somewhere of how much we get in grants every year?
We do, so that is in our comprehensive annual financial report. And there's a section, actually a separate book, that we do just for school grants, and then we have another book for our grants because we audit those separately.
Great. I think it's, yeah.
It's just a good way to get a full picture.
Right. Remind people that there's...
Yeah, and those are all available on our website. The comprehensive reports are actually super helpful. The other day I was trying to figure out who the biggest employer was in town and you know, you can find things like that in there, but you also can see a lot of different metrics about the number of veterans we helped last year or the number of tax bills that went out. It's a really pretty handy tool if you haven't checked it out.
And the difference between our revenues and expenses goes into free cap?
Yep. So that rolls over into our free cash. Sometimes it's a one-time revenue source that, you know, we didn't expect, we like a large permit fee, that kind of thing.
But low is good.
Any other questions? Okay. All right. Thank you. Let's hope that we have even good news. Item B is the opioid presentation, so we're pleased to bring a whole bunch of people forward. Melissa, Cheryl Varzac, the Director of Health Services, Ally Grantham, the Assistant Principal at North Andover High, and Jess Befferman, the Town's Consultant, are here to present information to us about the opioid settlement. Come on up, all of you.
So is D helpful? D is money?
No. Melissa.
So I'll sit and go through these first couple of slides and then I hand it over to you guys.
Perfect.
I think the first couple. So I feel like we already talked about opioids today in our executive session, but as we know, we started receiving funds from the pharmaceutical companies due to the settlements and the lawsuits in 2023. In the winter, we found out that we could use special revenue funds for these accounts, which was great. Before that, we weren't really sure what we were going to do. People were creating stabilization accounts. It was difficult, so this makes the spending a lot easier. In the spring, we created an internal team and that team meets to review all the funding requests. To date, we've had eight requests made and six funded. It is very strict about how we can use the money, and so we've been disappointed on some of them, but have been really happy what we have been able to get funded. This summer, we expanded the team a little bit to include more public safety, our health director, elder services, to help us kind of flush out how the money should be spent. So in 2024, we had the Breathe Program and then the Case Manager Salary, which was great because we had used opera funding to bring that on, and now we're able to continue that. In 2025 so far, we've had the Breathe Program again, the Case Manager Salary, their Care Solus Program, which the schools were already using, now going out to the rest of the town, a community survey that we're doing in concert with Andover, and a shops disposal program that we've been doing with the Health Department. We do project to continue to have this funding for some time through 2039. We will have about $1.7 million. Sorry, it's getting upset up there, but it's going to come back. There we go. We plan to receive about $100,000 per year just on the settlements that are already done, what we already know we're going to be getting. So far, we've received a little over $500,000 and we've spent about $100,000. We do anticipate we'll spend about $193,600 in the rest of this fiscal year.
All right. I hand it over to you. You want to go here?
Sounds good.
Right ahead.
So hello for people who I haven't met. I actually know a lot more people in the room than I expected, which is kind of exciting because I've started my interviews and so that's great. So I wanted to just, and I'm going to try to go quickly because I'm sure you guys have a very full agenda, it looked like you did, so just tell you a little bit about me, Jess Befferman. I have a background in both public health and management consulting. I've spent over a decade at Blue Cross Blue Shield doing pretty large-scale projects, but then more recently have been working more locally with municipalities specifically on their opioid settlement money and how to best send it, spend it based on their individual needs. I'm also a longtime resident of Winchester, was on the Board of Health for over 10 years and very active in the Winchester Coalition for a safer community. So we just went over some of the background, but I think important to understand financially that North Andover will receive on average $100,000 annually. So when you look over the cumulative amount, it's a lot, but if you break it down annually, you really want to be very thoughtful in how you're spending it because that money can go very quickly. I'm not going to get into why we're having to get the money, but in terms of next steps, the state has really asked that municipalities spend some time determining what specific needs their towns have in order to determine how to best allocate the funding, and that's what we're doing now. Again, I'm not going to go into the details here, it was just, Melissa just alluded to it, but there's very specific things that you can and can't do with the money. So there are specific categories and within those categories, there's very detailed guidelines. So just so that's clear. But what I did want to spend time on is just talk about my project approach. One of the things I'll be doing is looking at existing data. So just generally speaking, I mean, North Andover, when you look at opioid overdoses or emergency room visits, it's a very small amount, which is great compared even to the county and then the state overall. So that's great. However, one of the things that's been really interesting about this work is when you peel things back, you will find that there are definitely people in your community who have suffered, are suffering from opioid-related situations, and there's money here that we can now help them with. So I'll be looking at existing data, already started interviews, several people in the room, which has been great, been really impressed. I just want to mention with the youth center you guys have and everything that's offered there, there's some really exciting synergies I think that can be made with the funding coming in and things you guys already have existing. Surveys will be coming up the month of October. We have, it's about a 15-question survey. We'll be pushing it out all over. We hope all of you guys will take it and share it with different parts of the community that you have. And we're, again, getting ready to communicate about that. We're actually working on a postcard that will be going out to all residents and businesses. The last piece is the focus groups. This is actually, was a very meaningful part of the project in that, again, there's a lot of people that you may not be aware of who've been impacted and it's hard to identify them. But through the survey, people have an opportunity to provide their contact information. It is an anonymous survey, but they can, if they would like, to provide their contact information and participate in focus groups. And we learned a lot. And in the other communities I've done, I mean, anywhere between 8% to 10% of people had lost a family member or someone they knew, which is a very high number. So again, it was based on the people who had responded, but there are people in the community who have definitely been impacted who we get to hear from. So in terms of the high-level timeline, September and October, doing some data analysis now on what's available at the state and local resources, doing interviews and synthesizing them. We definitely in the next couple of weeks will be getting communications out, and then October is the survey will be live, and then November, December analyzing that, and then we'll have focus groups in December. And January is when we'll be probably coming back here with the findings and the recommendations. And then just quickly, what we've done so far is we have a comprehensive project plan with timelines and deliverables, meeting weekly, even with some people who are in the room. The interviews have been, I would say about half of them have been scheduled and, you know, maybe quarter, I don't even know, a little less than a quarter have already been done. And the survey questions are being circulated for finalization, same with the postcard. So that is it in a nutshell. And my contact information is here if anyone has any questions or concerns. That's it.
How do you create your focus groups?
So the way I've done it in the past was I, well, so I had different themes based on the focus group. So there's professional focus group, so people who had shared their contact information, who were professionals who worked with people impacted by opioids. I did a focus group around that. I did a focus group, it was small but very meaningful, on people who had lost a family member to opioids. And then I had another one for people who currently had a family member who were struggling with substance use or opioids. So I'll probably structure, I mean, I guess it somewhat depends on what I receive back and how many respondents there are. So. Do you guys have slides?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
If you guys want to take over the seats. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Eileen Grantham. I'm one of the Assistant Principals at the North Andover High School. And what we did with the opioid grant was Cheryl and I worked together with Michelle to come up with a preventative approach to kind of help navigate some of the challenges we're dealing with in the high school specifically. And if you're on North Andover Moms, I'm sure you've seen all the commentary on the bathrooms. So specifically addressing some of the challenges that we faced in the bathrooms around vaping and other types of substance use. So one of the pieces that we wanted to put in place was a Breathe Program, which is a preventative measure that we started last January. And the mission statement behind it, we created a whole program associated with mission statements, purpose, who goes in, who leaves, how you go in, how you leave. And basically, you'll notice the breathe and that was intentional, building resilience, education, accountability, and trust for health empowerment. So we kind of wanted to play on the words of the vaping challenges and the substance use challenges, hence why we called it Breathe. And then the mission statement is to provide the opportunity to develop essential skills. So we're really looking at those skill gaps associated to why students are using substances in the building and accessing the bathroom. And so that was twofold. There were two pieces that we were looking at. We were looking at trying to find a preventative way to help manage some of the vaping and substance use inside the high school, but also provide opportunities for students to feel safe when they use the bathroom. Because we tried a lot of different approaches and unfortunately that caused a lot of restrictions, which was hurting more kids than helping them. So this Breathe Program has allowed us to open every single bathroom in the schools. So all kids have access to multiple bathrooms during all the periods. This is coupled with teachers that are walking the halls, checking the bathrooms, and then also the three staff have been trained in helping develop skill gaps associated with some of the decision-making they're making in the high school. So why do we do the Breathe Program? It kind of works on those executive functioning skills, self-regulation, decision-making skills. And our goal was also twofold with the new state law. We are trying to reduce as many out-of-school suspensions. It seemed counterintuitive to suspend somebody for vaping so they could go home and vape. So that was kind of the thought process behind it. And it really does promote the restorative practices and healthy decision-making that comes with the program. So we look at the pieces. It's not punitive, it's meant to be restorative. It's evidence-based curriculum. We're using Catch My Breath, Character Strong. We use Ross Green's Collaborative Problem Solving. We use Peg Dawson's Executive Functioning Mentoring. And then we use Dr. Azawiki's CORE, which is Pathways to Problem Solving. They're tailored interventions and reintegration plans for all students. So who's eligible? Students that are eligible are students that are struggling to meet with behavioral expectations, specifically surrounding vaping or other substances, is specifically involving unhealthy choices or any unsafe behavior. It's determined through the people that assign the students to breathe, they're either myself or Mr. Young, so it is administratively controlled and managed. So the goal is to do educational activities, reflective exercises, academic support, and restorative plans. So most students, when they have to earn their way out, they spend a minimum of one to three periods, so they have to problem solve and they have to, they have to process the behavior, then they have to come up with a plan, and then they have to do academic work. So they get 10 points for each. And then they leave, most students leave within two to three periods, so they're not there all day. It's not punitive. It's meant to be more of in and out. And when the students aren't accessing the program, the staff are walking the halls and helping support the kids throughout the day with the teachers. So we worked really closely last year to train the three staff that are currently in the program, that are managing the students, as well as training the staff on how to access the program. And the data, this is the preliminary data from second semester last year. It's hard to see all of it, but most of the students that were in there were either put in there loitering in the bathroom, more than one person in a stall, which still surprises me, I'm sorry. And then leaving the building, and then obviously active vaping. So, and by the end of the year, it really has significantly reduced. So in the second semester, there were 236 students that accessed the Breathe Program and used the resources in the Breathe Program. Out of the, by the end of the year, only 32 students went through the program more than once. So a lot of students were one and done and they managed to. So it allows us to really focus our attention on the students that are really struggling to get through the day without vaping or using substances, and that's where Cheryl's team comes in to kind of help support the students that are struggling with addiction. And then Michelle's team kind of helps support the students that might have some behavioral challenges associated with why they need to be in there. So we have access to the special education teachers, Michelle's team, and Cheryl's team to help create an umbrella of resources to help students so that they're not staying in there. And that's pretty much it in a nutshell. I don't know if you have any questions.
It was really informative. Most, well, a couple of us have high school kids and we hear about the Breathe Program, but I didn't know really a lot about it.
You know you've made it when the students, when the students say you can't breathe us all. So they're using it as a verb. So thanks for not breathing us, you know, and really focusing on trying to make sure kids stay in the building. There are some non-negotiables that do result in out-of-school suspension. You know, if they have a large amount of substances on them, then breathe is not really appropriate. If they put hands on someone else, breathe is not appropriate. But it allows us to really curtail our suspensions, but also make sure students stay in the building and get the help they need.
Is this part of where that parking monitor comes in?
The parking monitor was paid by the increased, the increased funding for the parking spots, but also they work with the Breathe Team to kind of make sure they're not sneaking. Because obviously, when, once we start really curtailing access to the bathrooms, they're sneaking out. So that's the next phase. They're sneaking out to vape.
How many students were in the high school last year?
13, a little over 13, 50.
13, 50.
So.
Was that a surprising percentage who ended up having to go through the program in your experience?
No. Generally speaking...
As a parent of a senior, I'm still looking to say, wow, that's a lot of kids, but...
No, it, we anticipated a pretty big extinction burst. We started with very, we targeted certain behaviors, specifically more than one person in a bathroom stall, more than one, loitering in the bathroom, actively using in the bathroom. So when we started to really highlight like specific behaviors, then we kind of kept adding behaviors because I think one day, I think we did 17 referrals. So, but generally speaking, it's not like they just go in there. We usually call the parents, we conference with the parents, we kind of explain the process because most students will choose that, we want to give them an incentive to do the program because we're expecting a lot from them. So the incentive is they're not going to get traditional discipline. And the incentive for that is the parents have to be on board, the kid has to be on board. And in fairness, I've had some kids that say, just suspend me, I don't care, you know? So most kids though do choose to go the Breathe route because it's not punitive and it's not meant to, it's not meant to punish them in any way, shape, or form. It's meant to help close skill gaps and help them make better decisions, specifically around their health.
The recidivism rate looks great, candidly.
So, and most kids, anecdotally, most kids, they still say there's, I'd be naive to think that the vaping has completely disappeared, but what I like hearing is a kid say, I don't have smoke blown in my face. And so with, with all the bathrooms being open and more monitoring, it does allow us to really focus on the kids that are really struggling to get through the day without using substances. to get through the day without using substances.
Well, that's interesting, because it's losses, the 11 heard students who are also suffering as a result of this, a result of behavior, right?
Agreed. And it kind of went twofold, kind of helping making the bathrooms feel more safe for students, but also helping students get the help they need. And then kind of eliminating the casual vapors. That was the other piece, coupled with the health programs that are actually giving more, more instruction and on the harmful effects of vaping. Even with the survey last year, it's gone down significantly with the Catch My Breath. So it is slowly starting, we're slowly getting a handle of it, but it is one of the biggest problems right now with high school students in trying to keep them from accessing the vape, specifically the vaping that could lead to other substances. Because the nicotine turns to marijuana, which turns to, it just keeps going forward.
Is there any sort of counterpart to this in the middle schools to try to curb it before it?
At this point in the middle school, it's more about the educational piece.
Yeah, as I would expect.
Yeah, and the health classes and the wellness classes, they're all talking all about the.
And inform them about the Breathe program in the middle school, so they.
So they know it's coming.
So they know it's coming, yeah.
And we really try to be flexible with how we're accessing the space so it doesn't become super crowded because it does lose its appeal when there's like 17 kids in there.
Is that what you mean, but you can't breathe us all?
You can't breathe us all. That was when they did the walkout, they did the walkout, that's what they said. You can't breathe us all. So, which shows that they're taking it very seriously.
Well, at least they understand.
And they get it, and they're really, a lot of kids will never see, but then there's going to be some kids that really need that space. And then everything's very structured in what they have access to when they're learning it.
And I would take that as a challenge too, you could breathe them off if you really had to.
Yeah, I guess we could, but. No, I mean, 95% of the kids in the building do exactly what they're supposed to be doing. It's really kind of addressing the 5% that are really struggling to get through the day. And you catch more flies with honey, that's kind of the thinking.
I really appreciate you guys finding a program to open the bathrooms up and, like you said, kind of focusing on the smaller group and not hurting the larger group of like closing, I've got, we've got a couple freshmen and, you know, that was, I guess, surprising to me that the bathrooms were closed, but we really do appreciate you guys finding a positive way to handle it.
Well, and then they receive state funding for vape detectors. So with that, this coupled with vape detectors, I'm hoping that will make a huge impact.
So we're waiting for the M Mark to be released.
So they're not installed yet?
No, we're still in talks, we're still in talks and looking at those pieces.
The M Marks usually come.
Closer to the spring.
But the good news is it gives us an opportunity to really shape the behavior so it doesn't feel so drastic for people. They know it's coming and they know they have, that's why we kind of anticipated the need for the parking attendant because we knew that as soon as the bathrooms become inaccessible, they're going to try to sneak out.
Have you already started this for this school year, like have?
Have we had students already go through the Breathe program? Yeah, we had like three today. So, but that's okay, we're, that's what it's there for.
It's there for, so, well, thank you.
Can we get an update at the, I'd like to see how these numbers change. Is there a way for us to get access, they're going to come back and present it to us again, I'm more curious.
I can share, we have an ongoing data collection when we input kids, but we can figure out a way to redact the names and then I can share it with you so that you can actually see the raw numbers.
It'd be great to see progress, we'd see that number go down every year.
That's, well, and that's the goal, but in fairness, every time the number starts to go down, we want to keep them busy, so we add another behavior. So, so, this is, I mean, this is where I kind of did a lot of my work when I was in my previous districts in Rhode Island. I'm like a behaviorist by trade, so that's kind of how we, we kind of strategically. So when the numbers start going down and they can manage, then we add another behavior so that they know, and the kids know it's coming. Like this will be a breathable offense, is usually what I say, this is a breathable offense. And they come up, certainly kids are more creative than we are. So it's always finding those loopholes.
They're really good at that.
They are, they are, which is good because we want them to be thinking for themselves. We just want to steer them in the right direction.
This is great, thank you.
The only thing that I would caution you was just don't, don't use the kids' names when you come to our meetings, because they're going to be.
No, absolutely not. That's why I said we'll provide the data while we can redact the names.
If you can't do that, it would be good to see every, you know.
That's why you're just seeing, you're just seeing the percentages there, it doesn't have the details.
That's great.
Thank you all.
Looks like you're off to a great start.
All right, we're going to move on to item C, where the approval of the Global War on Terror Monument Design, so. Yes, sure, if you're already hooked up.
Thanks, Steve.
So Jeff, come on up.
Hello, Jeff Clark, 1295 Salem Street, and Commander of the VFW. So as Leslie said, we worked with the committees, and we think we found a design that we all like. It is matching more with the other monuments in the area. As you can see, so it's about four feet wide, and this is the best design that we have right now because we weren't going to spend the money to get really good ones until you liked kind of this general depiction. But it's going to be basically two things, it's going to be the monument itself, so four feet by four feet. It's going to be below eight feet tall, so it'll be below, shorter than the World War I monument, is the intent. And then it's going to have four sides. Unfortunately, we had to kind of go with the four instead of the five. Don't think we're going to get the 9/11 piece of steel that we were hoping for. Apparently, everybody in the world wants a piece of steel. So we're still working it, but I don't think it's going to happen. If it, for some reason we do, we'll figure out a way, come back and get that incorporated. But, so four sides, the introduction stone, the conflict stone, bronze on the side. The back of it will have the Battlefield Cross, the history of that, what it is. And then the other side will be the Global War on Terror. And then behind it will be a granite bench that has something to the effect of, for the ones who didn't make it home, or the, something for the other suicide. We have 22 veterans a day kill themselves because of the PTSD. So we want to have some sort of inscription on there. We were talking about possibly a QR code to get some help if need be, but have a bench, a place for them to reflect and look at the monument. So we think that's pretty simple. I think it hits everybody's intent, and that's what we're hoping for. So with your approval, we will go ahead with the procurement process and get this thing going. Again, we want to have it installed for the 25th anniversary of 9/11, which is a year from now, so we should have, we should have time.
So hopefully, you start seeing some of those earmarks.
We already have it spent, so. So yeah, so we, like you said, working with some monument designers. We found one that we really like, he did these drawings for us. I like the picture he put in there for scale, that's kind of silly. But he helped us with that, he's been, he's been great, we've worked with him in the past. So we hope that we can move forward.
Fantastic.
I didn't mean to cut you off. The bench, does that go with the monument?
It does, it's all going to be buried granite.
So it's reflective, you could sit there and reflect versus walk by and go, oh, that's nice.
Exactly, that's the intent. We want it to face in so you can read it. And the beauty of it is, you'll be, when you're sitting on the bench, you'll see the backside of it. So the front will be facing the street. The backside, you'll be able to read the purpose of the Battlefield Cross. That's why it's back there, so you can kind of read while you're sitting and really take the whole thing in. Again, with the, around it will be all pavers as well. So that whole area will be maintenance-free, buried granite, so relatively locally sourced. It matches the other granite in the area in the park. All the granite will look the same, and then the bronze plaques themselves will be the same as the bronze that are on the other monuments too.
And the location, the main street side of the park, is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
All right.
With the trash barrels are now.
It's Parkway, right, like Parkway and Main Park.
Is that Park?
Parkway, yes, sorry.
The little triangle, right?
Correct, yep, it's already, this is a perfect little spot. We already transplanted some of the shrubs on there, we'll transplant the rest wherever you guys want them to go, we'll put them there. And the good thing is, they are. And the other thing too is, we have the Cub Scout, sorry, the Boy Scout troop. Two of them are going for their Eagle Scout, and their project is to help us out as well. So they're doing some extra education, it's going to the school systems too. So we're working with the Boy Scouts on that. So once approved, we'll be ready to go, and the schools will all get a handout about the memorial and the history of it all, as well as the other memorials, not just the Global War on Terror, but the rest of them too. So that'll be good.
And the bench will be on the park side, on the inside?
Correct, yeah, so as you're walking, kind of in the track, you can take a, like I'll have to take a knee, take a seat, catch your breath.
We like the idea of the QR code or something along those lines, if someone's chance to get help.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's great.
And it's, you know, something that can come off with time, but there's some manufacturers that we found that could put something on there. So something small, sitting there next to the words, and if you need some help, you can get it. So yes, so we're seeking your approval.
I was going to say, we really appreciate all your work and working collaboratively.
Yeah, no, it's been, it's been a ride, right? It's been fun, so hopefully we get this thing going.
I move approval of this project, obviously. I got the guy in the military.
A second and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Fantastic, thank you so much, thank you guys.
Oh, you're very welcome, thank you.
I look forward to seeing you.
When will it be all put together together? I don't want to lock you in for a decision.
So because of it all, we're going to, we're talking about putting all the granite in, probably in the spring, summertime. But we asked the cap to go on, the Battlefield Cross itself, right before 9/11, so that'll be the unveiling. So you can go, just because of logistics, it'll have to be put in early. But yeah, the bronze, hopefully the bronze, but if nothing else, just the Battlefield Cross, right before. Yep, and then of course, we're going to have the 25th anniversary 9/11 memorial service there instead of the Fire Department, we already spoke with them, we're going to have a big tada there. So looking for guest speakers and kind of make a big event out of it.
Thank you, thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Awesome. All right, moving on to item D, the request of the library to use the town common on September 23rd, October 2nd, and October 28th from 10:00 to 1:30 for Bookmobile and Storytime. So, pretty basic request, super exciting event. I'm really glad that they're out and about and doing this, so. Any questions? They came to the farmer's market, it's cool. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Well, you wouldn't know that, I was just wondering if they've, because these are early, like obviously for little kids, I just, do they plan on doing things like after school?
I'll ask, I know that they were trying, they're really just starting to set their entire schedule up.
Or maybe going to the school?
Yeah, I think their plan is to start trying to visit schools and farmer complexes and elderly housing, and I mean, it's pretty cool because it's also a hotspot. So, you know, we'll hopefully enroll it out at town meeting and other places where we typically.
Pretty cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of kids at Woodridge.
Yeah, it's a, it's really been fun and it's been very successful so far. So they were very excited to go to the farmer's market.
We'll take them back. Okay, so I'll take a motion.
Now, Cheryl, move the Select Board approval request from Catherine Keen to use the town common on September 23rd, October 2nd, and October, well, is it the 2nd or the 7th?
Second.
Second.
Her letter says the 7th.
Well.
As requested.
As requested.
As requested, on the three dates at 10:00 AM and 1:30 PM for the Bookmobile and Storytime. Her letter says the 7th.
Her letter says the 7th, so we're going to say as requested.
As requested.
So any of us, okay. All right.
So I get for reading it in full.
A second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, perfect. All right, item E is for, to appoint me to, as the representative to the Greater Lawrence Community Action Council. So. Easy peasy. Laurie has served for a really long time, so.
Look of panic across her face for a moment.
I'll move that the Select Board appoint Janice Phillips as the representative to the Greater Lawrence Community Action Council.
I have a motion and a second, I won't vote, but all those in favor? And I'll abstain.
Thank you for representing us.
I am looking forward to it, it's a great group of people, and yeah. I know a lot of the board members already, and I've met, yeah. So, I'm looking forward to it. Item F, the vote to sell 867 Turnpike Street, units 113, 115, and seek post-judgment redemption. Okay, I'm going to hand that to Leslie to explain, because I had to ask.
So this is a little different, I don't think I've seen it before. But basically, the town has taken 867 Turnpike Street, units 113 and 115, due to unpaid taxes. So the taxes were not, have not been paid since 2020. We statutorily are required to determine whether or not we would want to vote to sell or keep this property, but our goal is always post-judgment redemption. So our hope always is that the person will come pay their taxes and get their property back, and that we will not have to move forward with either a sale or with keeping the property. In this instance, it is two business condos, so really nothing that the town would want to hold on to. And if we are unable to seek post-judgment redemption, we would get, we would basically go do an RP for a broker and sell it. I'm hoping we don't have to do that. But that's basically, we're statutorily required to make a determination on whether to vote to sell or keep within a certain number of days after the property has a judgment of taking.
How long of non-payments before we take it?
So we, this is an interesting situation for us because we have a 93% payment rate, so we don't really have a lot of non-payments of taxes. Most of the time, we use a law firm to do all of our takings. Most of the time, we don't ever see it get to this point, it's very unusual. Usually, we're able to have a conversation and the person redeems. We send it after the first or second year. We have some properties that have been held back a while because of COVID. So during COVID, we didn't do any takings, we made a determination, a policy determination to hold off and not do them. So now we're seeing a lot of that catch up. It does take a good two years through the court system, so that's why we don't usually see it come to this. In my career in total, I've had two times that a property has been taken by taxes. So this is relatively unusual, and it's actually a low amount on this property. So I'm hoping we'll see redemption.
Okay, any other questions? If not, I will take a motion.
Move the Select Board vote to sell 867 Turnpike Street, units 113 and 115, and seek post-judgment redemption.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, keep us posted. Item G, to approve disbursement of $150,000 from the Affordable Housing Trust to fund a critical home repair program. Laurie, you can explain.
She's already been busy on the phone with these in the course of two days.
So the trust entered into an agreement with Habitat. Well, we voted to allocate $150,000, and so we entered into an agreement with Habitat for Humanity to administer the program, and we actually just received our first application. And so per the bylaw for the trust, we have to come to the board in order to have money dispersed from the trust fund. So how do people apply, or for what kind of projects? It went out, it went out in the news, it's for critical home repairs, like leaking roofs, if you need a handicap ramp.
It's on the Affordable Housing Trust page?
It's on the Affordable Housing Trust page, and we've had it sent out in the news a couple of times. I think we've sent it out with a newsletter once. And it's income-driven, because you're using trust funds, it can only, you have to be income-qualified for it. So it's a really good program for seniors that are on a limited income. And its purpose really for them is to allow them to remain in their homes and not, you know, they have all these repairs, they have to remain, they don't have any money to do the repair.
And it's critical things, like.
Absolutely. Yeah. And it'll address, it'll address like things that have to be done in order to get you to that point. So say your electrical system is bad, and you can't do this repair because you're not up to code, they will help with that as well. So does Kath, obviously Kathy knows about it at the senior center, and like, does she? Kathy knows, Joe does, yeah. And they connect you with, or they connect them to you, I guess.
They connect to Habitat.
Not to you, yeah, but to Habitat. And is there a cath for? It's $30,000.
Okay, that's a good amount.
Yeah, and we pay a small fee to Habitat for running the program. They do everything, they do the approvals, they qualify the borrowers. What we end up doing, it works very, it works exactly like the Down Payment Assistance Program, where we're putting a mortgage on the home with a restriction for 10 years, and then if they stay there for 10 years, it gets forgiven. If it gets sold within that 10 years, it's a certain percentage, 20%. Every year after five years is forgiven. So at the end of 10 years, it's completely forgiven.
That's a great program.
Yeah, it is.
It's exciting.
It is exciting.
And I think we'll see a lot of use, so.
I think so.
Yeah.
Who makes the determination on what exactly a critical home repair is?
There's guidelines to what they'll do, and mostly it's Habitat. They've been doing this for a while, they do it for other, I don't know which other cities or towns they do. They do it for other, I don't know which other cities or towns they do, for I believe they do one, they do one for PBD. And they, they're pros at it, so.
Is there a way to fund it with more money through CPC?
So, C, CPC actually, did they approve that this year? Yeah, they asked us to go back to them, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
For more money.
More, and we will, we can do that in the following years, too, like.
Yeah, yeah. Right now, we don't have a need for it, because we have enough funds in there, but if it really takes off, then.
We can increase that.
Yep, because we can use trust funds and CPC funds towards it. So, so really, I mean, technically, I guess you could say this hundred fifty was CPC funds.
It's CPC funds become trust funds.
Trust funds, right.
But we can increase that amount.
We can, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
No, I think that's great, like, any way to keep the seniors in their home.
Yeah.
Until there are other places for them, right, there's no place for them to go.
That'd be great. This demonstrates demand, too. That'll help CPC applications in the future, right, show them this clear need.
Right.
For a clear project.
I think the hardest part is getting the word out and trust.
Yeah.
Because we've been, we've been talking about this on the Affordable Housing Trust for quite some time, and, um, you know, I, I spoke with the seniors once, a number of years ago, like, sort of, you know, floating the idea to them, and, and I, there's a trust factor involved, and they're like, well, can you just lower our taxes instead? So you have to explain that, you know, well, you won't have to make this repair, so.
Right.
But I think that's, like, Kathy will be so instrumental in that, right?
Yeah.
Because, yeah.
Yeah, and veterans, too. Joe's, Joe has it, too, and he's got a lot of context that, you know.
It was, people were asking me that there's a property that's down in the High Street area, and wondering if that was part of a program or something. And I tried to make.
There is a veterans' housing on High Street.
Yes, no, uh, yeah, I, no, I know, because I was part of the group that put together. And, uh, so is it similar to that, or, or is it like that?
It's not housing, it's just projects.
So if you needed, if you qualified, if you had the income that was below whatever the threshold is, which I think is sixty percent, and you needed a new roof because your roof is leaking, then we could give you the funds to put your roof on. It's not providing housing.
It's just critical.
It should help repairs, so you can stay in your home.
Right, well, critical repairs are pretty helpful.
Right.
You don't want the roof leaking while they.
That's right, and the handicap ramps are a big one. That's why I think that, that is.
That's a huge.
Okay, alright, that's.
So it's really just getting the word out.
Alright.
Yes.
We'll work on that.
Okay.
I have a motion.
I'll move the, the select board approve the dispersment of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to the, to fund a critical home repair program.
I have a motion. And a bunch of seconds. We'll give Dave credit. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. Okay. Item H, to vote to approve four ex-official members to the festival committee. We have, I mean, you guys can talk about it, but we've had an influx of people who want to serve, and we want to keep them around, so.
Yeah, we've had a, um, I don't know, we, we've got three more to appoint to the festival committee.
Alright.
So some excitement, some new young people to volunteer. They're, um, they want to give them their time, so.
And we had, we had decreased the number of members because they could, it was hard to get work with, like, an open-ended amount. So this is a way to incorporate more people and still make it a functional committee.
And they're doing a good job, too, on Facebook, as far as, like, getting volunteers and, like, posting for signup sequences and stuff like that to get people involved, so.
They've already put out all the info about their holiday events. They have a lot going on, so, yeah. So this will be helpful, so I will take a motion.
I'll move the select board approve the addition of four ex-official members to the festival committee.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item I would be appointment, appointments to boards and committees, so I'm gonna pass it over to Dave and Laura, to Billison.
Um, first is Nathan Sanders for the Affordable Housing Trust. Uh, he's a relatively new resident, if I remember correctly. He's a data scientist, who's extremely passionate about affordable housing and super excited to serve on the Affordable Housing Trust, so. Laura and I met with him, and it's a great fit, and we certainly recommend him. Dan Leary, uh, for Old Centrist Historic District Commission. He's a longtime resident of North Andover, is a veteran, active in the Scouts. I think both, both in PAC eighty-nine and Troop eighty-seven. His kids are in the North Andover schools. It's great, we interviewed all of them, you know, all of these people, recommend.
He's a good guy.
Yeah.
He's such a good.
Lauren Belcito, Lorraine, right, Belcito. Um, she, she's, she served on the, um, on the Old Centrist Historic District as a non-voting, uh, associate member in the last year. Uh, she's been an alternate member. She's a legislative director for a nonprofit. Uh, she's got a bachelor's degree in history and is an active contributor to the Historical Society. And, uh, she was excited to, to be, actually have a, a, a voice as a voting member. Timmer Carlson for the festivals committee. Uh, she was also serving as a non-voting member, uh, so that would, this would upgrade her to a voting member. And Wendy, Wendy Venti for the Council of Aging, um, as an associate member. Um, she's self-employed, also very passionate and experienced, uh, with working with seniors and helping North Andover. She currently serves, or she has served as a program manager for community senior program at Mass General Brigham. So she's excellent candidate for that, and also, again, very excited to serve on that. And just, oh, oh, just, just generally, just incredibly impressed with just the, how, how willing, you know, residents are to serve on these committees and boards. We always say, you know, that our time runs on, you know, on, on volunteers, and it's just an honor to meet them and talk with them and push them forward.
Alright, I think we should probably take them one at a time because of all the expiration dates and all that. So I'll take a motion on Nathan Sanders.
I'll move that the select board appoint Nathan Sanders to the Affordable Housing Trust through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll take a motion on the second item, Dan Leary.
I'll move that the select board appoint Dan Leary to the Old Centrist Historic District Commission through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven.
And I will happily second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll take a motion for item three, Lorraine Belcito.
I'll move that the select board appoint Lorraine Belcito as a full member to the Old Centrist Historic District Commission through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll take a motion for Timmer Carlson to the festival committee.
I'll move that the select board appoint Timmer Carlson to the festivals committee through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And the last one, Wendy Venti.
I will move that the select board appoint Wendy Venti to the Council on Aging as an associate member through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-eight.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, nice. And thank you to all of them in advance.
And thank you, you guys, for eating with them.
Yes. Okay, moving on to old business, our vote to adopt the sponsorship policy, so we'll kick it back over to Melissa.
So, um, the chair and I were talking earlier about how we should, how we should approach who gets the funds from the banners, because historically, the teams have always gotten those funds. So I'm gonna ask you just to lay this on the table, to let me kind of look at how we possibly could figure out funneling those funds back to the teams. I think our goal is not to gain money from the sponsorships, but more is to make certain that the sponsorships are being done correctly. So we just want to see how we approach that, so, um, I'm gonna take a look at that, and then we thought maybe we could talk about it at your goal setting.
Can I make one comment on the policy itself?
Absolutely.
Just as, as reviewing it, um, and maybe this is the wrong comparison, just comparing it to what's our naming, uh, policy, which is very detailed in the way that the process is very, very clear. This is, I think, more flexible, maybe that's by design intentional. I, I don't, but we would only get involved, according to what I'm reading this, in, for anything longer than three years. Is that correct? And your office would make the decision on everything else?
Yes, because, uh, basically, what we'd be looking at, like, a contract, and so for contracts over three years, come to the select board.
Okay.
Do that, so that we don't have to, like.
We don't have to constantly, quick. No, I just wanted to make sure I understood that, yeah, yeah.
But we have, we accept the donation?
Mm-hmm.
So we'll, it'll still be on.
We'll know that it's happening, but we won't make the nitty-gritty decisions about, yeah.
And, and process-wise, I guess it could work both ways. Someone could come to us and say, we'd like to sponsor X, Y, or Z field, or we could put it out and say, we're soliciting sponsors, right?
We would solicit sponsors.
Oh, so we'd only?
Yes.
Only go out, okay, got it.
Because the goal is to follow all of the proper processes.
By procurement. This council's procurement, is what we're saying?
Right, yeah, so it counts as procurement because it has value, and then there is ethics laws that need to be followed when we request sponsorships or donations. We just want to make sure that all of that is being done.
So inbound solicitations will not be considered. Got it.
We'll have to just be part of it.
Understood, okay. Thank you for the clarification.
How is it, well, I guess current sponsors would be notified, would know, right?
Yeah, well, when we look at this, we'll, we'll select a date in which it would be, we'd kickoff.
And we'd have to go accept all of those.
Yes. Yeah, that would be the plan.
Okay, so for now, this will stay.
Yes, thank you.
Notes will be tabled. Um, and we'll move on to our consent items, which include accepting Green Communities grant from DOER in the amount of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for one-twenty R Main Street. Thank you, Laurie. Um, accepted donation from the, to the library from Mr. and Mrs. Peter LaFond in the amount of five hundred dollars. Accepted donation in the amount of a hundred and ten dollars to the festival committee for fireworks. Accepted donation to the library from the Friends of Stevens Memorial Library in the amount of five thousand five hundred dollars. And accept a donation to the library from the Board of Trustees of the Stevens Memorial Library in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars. So, I will take a motion.
I'll move that the select board accept all consent items.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion besides? Thank you, we want thank yous to everybody. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Moving on to the approval of minutes, the open session minutes from August fourteenth. Did everybody have a chance to look at them?
Did.
Make sure that we don't have any changes. Feels like it was a long time ago.
I have one comment to make, that feels like a long time ago.
It was a very long time ago. Okay. I'll take a motion.
I move the select board approve the open session minutes of August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, select board updates. Anybody?
Uh, had a chance to attend the service, service for Bobby Albrecht, uh, at the, at the Gorgons Field Hut. Very well attended. Probably about a hundred and fifty people or so. Said a few words on behalf of the board. They asked us to, since, as we're, as the approving party. Sign looks great, the hut looks great, um, and, yeah, the Albrecht family, I think, was, uh, was, was very well, very moved by the whole turnout. It was really, really well-received, yes. So, and got a little coverage in the Tribune, too, so, yeah.
Any other?
Have we met since National Night Out?
Yes.
Yeah, we have.
That was probably five years ago.
And nine eleven ceremony, I think, is this Thursday, yeah. Coming up, yeah.
Oh, my goodness. Glad you mentioned it.
Yeah, very quick, right.
Yeah.
And hopefully, everybody had a good first four days back to school.
And this week is a good, uh, full week, so. I spoke with Ms. Leather, who said there were just a few bus issues, and other than that, it was pretty smooth sailing, so.
As long as they pick up the kids. They drop them off at White House.
Well, parents, yes, the parents about that, I don't know. They want them to come home. Um, other than that, we have three more weeks left of the farmer's market. Unfortunately, we canceled this past weekend because it was not gonna bring a lot of people, and so, yeah, so, it was not great, so. We don't like to do that, but probably about once a year, we, you just have to, yeah, so. But we'll look for, we have a great last three weeks planned, so we look forward to seeing everybody there.
And Fall Festival is Sunday, right?
It's not, is it, it's the fourteenth.
Yeah.
Yeah, which is the Sunday.
Yes.
Good, we're on the same page. It's at the high school, correct?
It is at the high school at ten AM, and there are a lot of new and fun things planned for that. And for the first time in forever, there is an indoor alternative if the weather is poor, which has been the last, I don't know how many years. So it'll be a beautiful day because we have another option.
Yeah, I'll be there playing field hockey.
Oh, that's on the same, alright, same day.
What a great day it's going to be.
It is, it's a great day. Farmer's Market, we're gonna, yeah, cross-promotion at the farmer's market for the Fall Festival, and at the Fall Festival for the farmer's market. They did ask if we wanted to move the farmer's market for the week, and we declined that because there's no way.
New spot, yeah.
That's a lot of work.
There's only so many hours.
There's not, yeah, can't do it. But we'll cross-promote, it's gonna be great. It's, fall is here, and there's a lot happening, so. Any other updates? Okay, over to you, town manager.
Sure, I don't often use exclamation points in my announcements, but I did put one in this one because we did reaffirm our AAA bond rating, which was a big deal. We were very happy. Yes, so that was great news. Uh, we will be taking bond, cap, we'll be taking debt pretty soon for the second half of the middle school and some of the water projects that we're doing. Um, so we've got that coming on. We have a new updated RecPlex website, so people are, are interested, they can grab that. Our annual employee appreciation lunch is October fourteenth, so non-essential buildings will be closed from twelve to two on October fourteenth. And I just want to recognize DPW, I know they're still working, but they did a really great job on the summer paving projects. Main Street was so pleasant to drive down right now. Um, so we're looking forward to getting all of the line strapping and everything else done and ready. But they've, they've done a great job.
Now we need to enforce speed.
Yep, now, now people are gonna want to drive fast because it's no smooth, yep.
Do you have any idea when the line strapping is?
I don't. Uh, we still have a little bit left in the season, really, like, everything closes down typically around Thanksgiving, especially because it's been relatively mild. Yeah, so they'll, and then they'll get everything up and moving, so. Should be soon.
May I ask about, um, or if it's not on the agenda, just tell me, no, and I'll, um, the KP law thing. Is that information going out to all of our patrons of the license?
Which KP law are you talking about?
It was the conversion of on-premises mine and malt.
Oh, the change of license.
I got, I got this in my box, so I thought I would ask, but if it's not appropriate to ask at this time.
We can certainly do, include something about it when we go to do our renewals, but, yeah, it's not something that comes up too often.
I don't, I can't ever remember one coming up, but, so.
But we certainly look at it.
Sort of a backend thing, anyway.
Yeah.
Okay. Our next meeting is when?
Do you like to make that motion?
Goal setting.
It's our goal-setting meeting, that's right, on September twenty-second. It's a working session, and, um, with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
September twenty-second, you said?
Yeah.
At seven o'clock, right?
Nope.
Five o'clock at the senior.
At the senior center.
Yes, we're trying something different.
Definitely should have shown up.
Absolutely.
It's, it's gotten a little dark. It gets dark so early, so.
So sad.
Yeah.
That's true.
So we're trying something new.
Alright, I like it.
Update my calendar now.
Alright, I'll take a motion to adjourn. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.